Can get everybody's attention. Go ahead and call this meeting to order. I'll give you a few seconds to take your place at your seats. And if I can get everybody to stand for the invocation. Tonight's invocation we given by Pastor Mike Megginsen from Three Circle Church. And I would like to ask you to remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good evening, everybody. Good to be here. Before I pray, let me just say thank you for all that you do. Everybody here, I know that serving sometime can be a thankless job. And so, thank you for all that you do for our community and the mayor as well and everybody who serves our community. So, it's a great town, a great place to live. So, thank you for all that you do for Fairhope. So, let's pray together. So, Father, we thank you that you have given us an example of what it means to serve others. And that example is in your Son, Jesus, who came to us not to be served but to serve and to give his life as a ransom for us. In looking to that example of Jesus, I pray here tonight for the city council, for our mayor, for all of those in our city that are here serving others. Help them to remember that's what they're here to do. Help them to serve well. Help them to serve with wisdom and grace for all that comes before them in this meeting here tonight. Help them to be quick to listen, slow to anger, and help them to serve in such a way that would make Fairhope a better place for all who live here. Bless and use them now for your glory. In the name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor Megginsen. Did I hear Councilman Boone, right before you gave the invocation, mention that you may have married him? Is that correct?
Thirty-nine years ago. Job well done. And it worked.
Very good.
He said, "And it worked."
Very good, very good. Well, thank you, sir. Thank you for that fine prayer. All right, just a little housekeeping council. The public hearing, which is item five, would come normally right after council comments. But, you know, we're starting the meeting, you know, according to our new ordinance, we can start the meeting earlier. But that public hearing was advertised to be at 6:00 PM. So, we will not start that hearing prior to 6:00 PM. And we'll find a break and go back to that. So, it might be 6:05 or 6:10, somewhere in there. But it'll be, you know, sometime after 6 o'clock. And I'm not going to assign it, you know, a number because I don't know exactly where we're going to be. But we will pause in the agenda items to go back to number five. So, with that, we're on item one right now. And I will like to entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the November 21st regular city council meeting. Do you have any changes, additions, or deletions to those minutes?
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve those that submitted. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, please say nay. Okay, minutes are approved. Mayor Sullivan, your report, please.
Just a few things. Really wanted to talk about the opening of the new FBO or the terminal at the airport. We had that ribbon cutting last week and went really well. If you haven't seen that facility, you should really get out there and look at it. A great partnership with Flightline Plus to be able to run that facility. And it's just a great addition to the airport. A nice welcoming facility that's really reflective of Fairhope and its brand. Also, I want to thank Paige and her staff and everybody who participated in the Christmas parade. Talked about it in the work session, but just a great parade, a great night in Fairhope. And really want to thank everybody who participated and especially those volunteers who make those events possible. We do have Santa Saturdays again this Saturday from 10:30 to 12:00 there at the museum. Santa was there this Saturday, so you can bring your own camera and have your picture taken, which is great. And then also, we're going to be celebrating Tamara Dean, who is the director of the library on December 19th from 10:00 to 12:00 as she retires and moves on to the next chapter of her life. She's served Fairhope for 23 years at the library and then the past several years as director. So, I really appreciate her and her service to the city and looking forward to that celebration for her. With that being said, I think that's all that I have. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. All right, public participation. If you would like to address the council on items seven through 26, if you would come to the podium and state your name and address for the record, we will leave number five to a public hearing. Remember, this is only for agenda items. If you have something to bring forth before the council that's not on tonight's agenda, you'll be given another opportunity at the conclusion of tonight's meeting. So, I'll open public participation for agenda items less number five. Okay, seeing no one for public participation, I'll close public participation for agenda items and move to council comments. Councilman Martin.
I spoke on it earlier today, and the mayor spoke on it as well. I'll just pick it back on her about our events in the city and how nice and thanking all the people that put that together, all the people that served, the people that cleaned up afterwards. You know, a lot of the citizens, they see the festivities, but all the work that goes in sometimes seems to be unnoticed. But I want to make sure that those people that put that work in are noticed and they are loved and thanked. So, I appreciate that and Merry Christmas to everybody.
Okay. Counsel McConyers?
No comments from me.
Okay, Councilman Robinson?
Just reiterate what Corey said again about our Christmas parade. What a great job everybody does in putting that on and what wonderful event it is for everybody in the community.
Counselman Boone?
I've got to tell you, that parade, of all the parades this town has, that was my favorite. I do enjoy that parade. I enjoy everybody getting out there. I enjoy our camaraderie that we have and the fellowship that we have. It's just a wonderful, wonderful time for the city. And I want to appreciate all the city. You know, I drove around the next morning, and I'm telling you, you couldn't find one spot of trash on that street. The next morning at 8:00, it was just as clean as a whistle. We threw enough junk out there. The planet, I mean, we had stuff everywhere.
How many Snickers did you eat?
They did a wonderful job.
How many Snickers bars did you eat?
I ate a few. A couple or two. I keep my energy up.
That's right. Was that all?
That was it.
Okay. Well, I think that we covered, and the mayor's comments covered, the opening of the new terminal building and FBO at the airport last week. That was great. The Christmas parade was fantastic. And I believe that we should be able to start utilizing the new recycling facility that the county's going to be opening sometime in the very near future. So, I want to remind everybody to recycle. And, you know, if you miss your recycling date, like I did on Thanksgiving, because it was Thanksgiving Day, and I had a lot of recycling, and I called up George and he instructed me to go right on down there to the dump and sort it out. And I did that. So, you always have that option. So, anyway, we appreciate the ability to do that. With that, I will close council comments. And for now, we will move past number five and we will go to item number six on the agenda, which is a resolution that Mayor Sherri Sullivan is hereby authorized to execute an intergovernmental funding agreement between the city of Fairhope and the Baldwin County Commission for the use of county voting machines and the services of the county voting machine custodian and employees for municipal elections. The use of the county-owned voting machines is at no cost. The city will reimburse the county for the costs associated with services of the county voting machine custodian and employees for the municipal elections. Let me also say, if you're watching or if you just joined us, that we have been through every one of these items on the agenda with the exception of five, which we just spoke briefly about in tonight's work session. So, if you, we don't have enough discussion for you tonight is because we've discussed all these pretty much at length. So, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve number six.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, please say nay. Okay, motion carries. Item seven is a resolution that Mayor Sherri Sullivan is hereby authorized to execute an engagement letter for professional legal services with Hand, Arundel, Harrison, Sale, LLC for continued representation of the city, the Planning and Zoning Commission, the Board of Adjustments and Appeals, Fairhope Utilities, and all related matters involving planning, zoning, real property, and any other general representation as requested by the city, as well as litigation that may or may not be covered by the city's insurance carrier. And as stated in the work session, they're going up on some very modest increases in the rates that they charge the city. And not all of them, some of those rates are staying the same. So, we did cover that in tonight's work session as well. So, I'll entertain a motion to authorize the...
Approve the resolution. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries. And if you're here for item number five, we have skipped that. We'll be going back to that after 6:00 PM tonight. Item number eight is a resolution that the city council hereby authorizes the council president to sign bank documents for fiscal year 2025. As Kim said, this just naturally occurs anytime we change council president or authorizing them to assign bank documents, which is necessary from time to time in the absence of the mayor. Okay, I'll entertain it.
I make a motion to approve eight as written.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries. Thank you, council. Item number nine is a resolution. The city council approves the selection by Mayor Sullivan for professional grant administration services for the FY 2024 Community Project Funding HUD Grant for the Airport Industrial Park to Volker and hereby authorizes Mayor Sullivan to negotiate the not-to-exceed fee to be approved by the council. This would be for the, once again, the grant administration services.
Make a motion. We approve the selection of Volker.
We have a motion and a second. Thank you. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, please say nay. All right, motion carries. Thank you, council. Item number 10 is a resolution. The city council hereby approves and authorizes Mayor Sullivan to execute a memorandum of understanding between the Baldwin County Commission, the City of Fairhope, and the Fairhope Volunteer Fire Department regarding the shared use of certain communications infrastructure owned by the Baldwin County Commission for the purpose of supporting interoperable P-25 Public Safety Communication System.
So moved.
And this was a motion.
A second.
And a second. This was all described by Jeff in the work session. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries. Thank you, council. Item number 11 is a resolution. The city of Fairhope approves the award of the request for quotes for labor materials for the roof replacement for fire station number one to Southern Steel Structures for not to exceed project cost of $41,200. And Mr. Ladd described this to us in the work session. I think we did have three responsible bids and this was the low bid. So, I'll entertain a motion to approve the award.
So moved. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, please say nay. All right, motion carries. Thank you, council. Item number 12 is a resolution that Mayor Sullivan is hereby authorized to execute a contract with Long's Human Resources, Human Resource Services to supply temporary employees to supplement the existing workforce. These services are exempt pursuant to the Code of Alabama and authorize the treasurer to transfer $52,000 from salaries to temp contract labor. Once again, Mr. Ladd not only briefed us in the work session earlier tonight, but also in a work session a couple of weeks ago, a couple of meetings ago. So, any questions, he's here and available.
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Authorizing the mayor to execute the contract. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, please say nay. All right, motion carries. Thank you, council. Item 13 is a resolution that items are declared surplus and the mayor and city treasurer are hereby authorized and directed to dispose of personal property owned by the city of Fairhope by one of the three methods listed in the resolution. In your package tonight, you'll see those items that are going to be put up, declared surplus, and put up for sale. I think there were no additions or deletions to that. So, I will entertain a motion to authorize us to dispose of the property.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, please say nay. All right, motion carries. Thank you. Item 14 is a resolution that Mayor Sullivan is hereby authorized to execute change order number one for the resurfacing of Section Street from Fells Avenue to Bayou Drive with a cost of $5,377.77 and award change order number one to Asphalt Services. The new contract total will be $557,665.24. And here's the term of the day. That is for traffic control markings or striping on the streets. Just a modest amount, but I think that it's for another 1,300, 1,400 or so square feet.
I make a motion to approve.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. And this was something that Richard also covered in the work session tonight. All right, any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries. Thank you, council. Item number 15 is a resolution to award bid to Wayne's Pest Control Services for our pest control annual contract with an annual contract amount of $10,530.40. Mr. Ladd covered this in the work session. Now, this is for pest control services for all of our buildings throughout the city. I'll entertain a motion to award the bid.
So moved. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, please say nay. Okay, motion carries. Thank you, council. Item number 16 is a resolution. The city council approves the selection by Mayor Sullivan for professional surveying and engineering design services for the Bon Secour at Grand Drainage Project to Sawgrass Consulting and hereby authorize Mayor Sullivan to negotiate the not-to-exceed fee to be approved by the council. As Mr. Johnson explained just a short time ago, there's some failing drainage there and this needs to be taken care of and handled. And it may be an opportunity to move some utilities underground while we're doing so. But this is just to approve the selection by Mayor Sullivan. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved. Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve the selection. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, please say nay. Okay, motion carries. Thank you, council. Next item is a resolution. The city of Fairhope approves the award of the request for quotes for labor and materials for the public utilities and works, the complex recycle drop-off at the Public Works Administration Building, roof replacement to Roof Doctors of Alabama with a not-to-exceed project cost of $34,475. And Mr. Ladd also covered this in the work session. This is $5,525 under budget. So, I'll entertain a motion to approve the award.
So moved. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, please say nay. Okay, motion carries. Thank you, council. Item number 18 is a resolution that Mayor Sullivan is hereby authorized to execute a contract with Krebs Engineering for professional engineering services for the installation of a 24-inch water line from Water Treatment Plant Number Two to County Road 13 along Fairhope Avenue with a not-to-exceed contract amount of $305,000. Mr. Moreland briefed us earlier in the work session. That amounts to about 8%, which is well within standards of the cost of the project. So, I'll...
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, please say nay. All right, motion carries. Thank you, council. Item 19 is a resolution that Mayor Sullivan is hereby authorized to execute a contract with Krebs Engineering for professional engineering services for the installation of a 16-inch water main from Whale Treatment Plant Number Two to State Highway 181 with a not-to-exceed contract amount of $320,000. And as Darrell briefed us earlier, that is about 8.5% of the project cost, which is well within norms, in our opinion. So, I'll entertain a motion to authorize the mayor to execute the contract.
So moved. Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, please say nay. Okay, the motion carries. And for anybody that may have come in, we have skipped number five. If you're here for the public hearing, we'll go back to that. That was advertised for 6:00. So, we're not going to get ahead of ourselves, but we are carrying on with our other business. And I'd also like to point out, if it looks like we're going through these items pretty quick, that they were all covered in detail in the work session earlier tonight. So, we got very good briefings from our staff. Okay, item 20 is a resolution that Mayor Sullivan is hereby authorized to execute a contract for extension number two on call contractor services for water and server and sewer to W.R. Mitchell Contractor for one-year extension of the annual contract from January the 4th, 2025 to January 3rd, 2026 per the same terms and conditions of the original contract. Councilman Martin, I believe that was the one you were looking at. You were saying something that was a $500,000, but that would be...
Total.
Okay, but it's $250,000 per year, not...
That's exactly right. Two years left.
Okay. Well, it says a one-year extension from January 4th, 2025 to January 3rd, 2026. Okay, I just want to make sure that we were clear on that.
So it's...
Thank you. There we go.
So, that's, it's water and waste. And it's noted, if you look at the memorandum sheet, it's at the very bottom noted and it distinguishes it for the press, for the public to look at the press package. It's at the very, very bottom.
Yep, I see that. Yeah, it has them...
Not to exceed $500 total.
Yep, that'd be on page 178 of your package, anybody following along on your page there. Thank you for that clarification, Kim. Okay, now that we're clear on that, I'll entertain a motion to authorize the mayor to execute the contract.
So moved. Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Any questions or further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, please say nay. Okay, motion carries. Thank you, council. Item 21 is a resolution. The mayor Sullivan is hereby authorized to execute a contract amendment with Gonzalez Strength and Associates for professional engineering services for a feasibility study for a new 114-acre park with a not-to-exceed amount of $4,500, bringing the new contract total to $54,500. Now, this 114-acre park is the rec land at County Road 32 and 13. The $4,500 was added so that we could have a public input, have a public meeting for inputs from the public. It was just something that had been omitted originally. I get all that right, Mayor?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to authorize the contract amendment.
So moved. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Yeah, you know, this is something that we've been, I'm glad that we're finally seeing this manifest itself. You know, this is something that is well needed as far as our recreation and parkland. And for us to start putting pen to paper and moving forward, I'm really excited about this. It was a great job by the mayor and the rec board, all the people that were a part of this process. But this is a big deal. This step right here is a really big deal.
So, just to give everybody an idea of how big that parcel is, our park at Volanta is a 40-acre park. So, this is triple the size of that. So, I know we're growing at a rapid pace, but hopefully that'll sustain us for 20, 30, 40, 50 years. It should. And hopefully, we'll build it out, you know, piece by piece and have a master plan that we could build to over the coming decades. So, all right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, please say nay. All right, motion carries. Thank you, council. Item 23 is a resolution that Mayor Sullivan is hereby authorized to execute a contract between the city of Fairhope and Music Garden to provide musical entertainment at the Fairhope New Year's Eve Celebration 2024 for a not-to-exceed amount of $9,500 and authorizes city treasurer to pay $9,500 to Music Garden with the execution of contract prior to the performance. This is exempt from formal bidding per the Code of Alabama.
Point of order, sir.
I'm sorry.
We, point of order. We skipped 22. All right, I'll go back to that. No worries.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I checked it off too soon. All right, you okay with me moving on with this?
Yes, I just wanted...
Okay, thank you for bringing that up. All right, so we were told by, I believe, what, Paige, that this is an '80s cover band called U.S. Band. You can't make that up, though. We're all, we look for you all to be there. So, I will entertain a motion for the mayor to authorize and execute the contract.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, please say nay. All right, Councilman Martin, you know how easy it is to skip over one of these items there. You're invoking the dreaded point of order on me there. Item...
I wouldn't have done that.
Are you in a debate class or what? My God, man.
I know. I read the book once.
You wear a three-piece suit and you come in, point of order? All right, we're kidding. Item 22 is a resolution. The city of Fairhope approves Mayor Sullivan selection of pyro production as professional consultants, design and production of the fireworks display for the New Year's Eve 2024 pursuant to the Code of Alabama pyrotechnic shooter law and authorizes the mayor to execute the contract with an amount not to exceed $12,000. Mayor and council, I just wanted, you know, to put the music ahead of the fireworks like it'll be done that night.
That's right. That's right, that's right.
I will entertain a motion to allow the mayor selection of.
So moved, second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion, sorry about that.
Yeah, this has gone down, hasn't it?
Yeah.
Yes.
I mean, I'm, I just want to make that known, that for one moment, it was going this way, and now it has kind of stabilized and actually gone the other way, which is a good thing.
We can't expect any less of a show, though, right?
Yes.
Okay, all right, we have a motion and a second. All is in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, please say nay. All right, motion carries. Item 24 is a resolution to city council to reject all bids to procure services for joint-use attachment inventory for the electric department pursuant to the Code of Alabama. I believe we only had one bid, came up a little higher than we expected, so we're asking you to reject the bid. I'll entertain a motion to reject the bids?
So moved, second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Ben covered this in the work session earlier tonight. All right, hearing none, all is in favor of the motion, please say aye. Aye, opposed, please say nay. All right, motion carries. Item 25 is a resolution, the city council rejects all bids for the 46 KV transmission line for 2024 modifications and additions, and authorizes the rebid under Code of Alabama 1975. I believe we had two good responses and one noncompliant response, and Ben explained to us earlier that we feel like they were much higher than estimates. So we have a motion to reject the bids?
Second.
And a second, two seconds. All right, any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all is in favor of the motion, please say aye. Aye, opposed, please say nay. All right, motion carries. Item 26 is an application for a restaurant liquor license by Robert Evans of Little Bird Fairhope LLC, doing business as Little Bird, 404 Oak Avenue, Fairhope, Alabama, 36532. Chief Hollinghead briefed us earlier in the work session that everything is in order, and sees no reason to deny this application, so I'll entertain a motion for approval.
So moved, second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all is in favor of the motion, please say aye. Aye, opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries. We are going to go back to, I've got a couple of minutes after six, so we are in compliance with our, I got 604, that's probably a little bit more accurate on my iPhone, so we are in compliance with the law as advertised, the public hearing. This is an ordinance establishing impact fees on new development in the city of Fairhope and repealing and replacing ordinance number 1625. May someone introduce the ordinance, please?
Oh, there it is.
Okay, ordinance has been introduced. All right, Mr. Cortinas?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, Council. Periodically, we review and look if we need to update our impact fee ordinance, and so I put together a little quick thing to kind of tell everybody what's going on. There's, I get a lot of questions, and I think there's some misunderstandings or misconceptions about how we do impact fees, so I'm going to scroll through this real quick. Impact fees are based on state-enabling legislation, that is part of the state code that allows it. The municipalities may enact or impose fees within their corporate limits only. So that originally was adopted, and understand that that ordinance or that state legislation is specific to Baldwin County. That is not a statewide statute, that was done specifically, I believe it was Representative Byrne who did that many years ago, but that was back in 2007, and it was for Baldwin County alone. So, and since that time, the original ordinance was done right after that legislation came into effect. So the city's been charging impact fees since shortly after that was written at the state level. We are only allowed to charge impact fees within our corporate limits, and I know a lot of people kind of don't really understand kind of how disjointed our city limits can be, so they'll see work going on in a certain area, thinking that it's in the city, but it's not. So I put together, we have two maps, one, this shows kind of the northern boundary of the city, and if you go through up in this area, this is Rock Creek, you get out to, this is the waters, this site right here where the cursor is, that is the new Publix at 104-181, this is the Wawa. But if you look down, it's kind of patchwork as to what is in the city and what is not, and that is because annexation into the city is at the request of the individual property owner, it's not an authority to go and annex areas to do all that infill. So that is our northern boundary, this is our southern boundary. So down in this area, this is the Fairhope Airport, and this is the area that was just discussed at 32 and 13. Those areas were annexed even though they're not contiguous through Legislative Act, and so they were brought into the city, that's the southernmost boundary of the city limits. So impact fees are only allowed to be assessed on new development or expansion that creates additional capacity. They may only be collected for four services, for transportation, police, fire, and parks and rec. Those are the only things we can collect them for. Impact fees are not allowed to be collected for public schools, either, whether they're in the city limits or not, because they are owned and operated by the Baldwin County Board of Education, and the city has no regulatory authority on county-owned property, so they don't have to meet our ordinances, they don't have to get building permits or inspections from us, the county building department handles their construction, permitting, and inspections. The other portion is the public utilities are not eligible for impact fees, because they have their own ordinances and their own requirements for aid to construction, if there's things that they have to do that are charged to a developer, there are tap and connection fees that are also required, they have requirements often for system upsizing for a new development, and there are other fees that they have, but we can, the impact fees, the actual impact fees that come in cannot be attributed or given to either the public schools or to the public utilities. The fees, when we look at revising, we have a consultant that is Tishler Bice. Tishler Bice is the preeminent impact fee consulting firm in the country, they do thousands of them across the country, they are extremely good, we've used them all three times that we've done our ordinance, they have been very, very responsive, they are good at what they do, they have a tremendous reputation, so we have been very comfortable working with them. So the way that that is done, the report that generates whether the fees go up or go down is a statistical analysis. So they look at demographics, they do a financial analysis, and they talk about, they look at things such as your anticipated growth, the type of growth, are you doing commercial, residential, industrial? What does that, what kind of vehicular trip generation does that growth get? Because that gets into paving of roads, that gets into additional wearing of roads because of new vehicles that are on there. What is the need for additional parkland and public spaces for new residents moving there, and anybody who's involved in youth sports, our ball fields, our baseball fields, soccer fields, football fields, we have people coming, we have that many more participants, we need that much more room to be able to handle that. The cost of infrastructure improvements or capital purchases, they look at what are the current market value, what does it cost to pave a mile of asphalt? What does it cost now for a new police cruiser? What does it cost now for a new fire truck? They take all of these factors into account. The report that they gave us, gave us a very detailed breakdown per each of the four categories of police, fire, parks, and rec, and infrastructure. It talked about in the breakdown of what the costs are, these are what, based on the 2017 study, this is how the costs have either increased or decreased, and based on all that, they put together the statistical report that tells us where those impact fee numbers should fall. So, on the left-hand side is our current fee schedule, this is from our ordinance, so right now, and one other thing I want to go back to real quick, there is a provision in our state enabling legislation that says we can charge a maximum, a complete maximum, of 1% of the combined construction and land cost. Then they have a fee schedule on here, so right now, technically, we should charge $5,830 for every new house as an impact fee. But if the combined land and construction value comes out to $400,000, they're charged the lesser of the two. So that house, instead of paying 5830, is going to pay a $4,000 impact fee, because that is 1% of the $400,000. That's how it's calculated. So anytime we look at that, they pay the lesser of those two calculation fees. So, and it's the same, and also, you're going to see these little designations, R3, R2, R4, AM, those are building code classifications. So every building, every use has an occupancy classification, that's how they're broken down. I put those in there so that anytime we get an application, we classify it by occupancy classification, and that then will correlate to which of these line items apply. The second line you'll see on every one where it says percentage allocation, that is if we hit the 1% max, and it's less than the fee number, these are the percentages by which whatever number we collect are split and distributed amongst the four components. So in this instance, for a residence, if that's a $4,000 impact fee for a $400,000 property, that 15% of that goes to fire, 12.8 goes to police, 51.4 goes to parks and rec, 20.8 goes to transportation. So that's why you see the split line, since we have that restriction of the 1% max. So comparing the two from the 2017 study to the 2024 study, in 2017, they calculated that an impact for a residence is $5,830, the new fee will take that to $9,237 for an increase in $3,407. For multifamily, which multifamily, that's going to wind up being your townhomes, your apartments, your things of that nature, ironically, and I know we had the work session in October, and I think, you know, you guys, you had questions about this, based on their statistical analysis and the proposed demographics, that fee actually dropped $402, and those fees are per housing unit. So that actually went down from 3713 to 3331, that was the only decrease of any classification we saw. If you go down to the next line, now for the commercial and non-residential, these fees are based on every 1,000 square feet of floor area. So a commercial retail, A and M is assembly or mercantile, an assembly is going to be a restaurant, bar, nightclub, we get a lot of people, a church, things like that. A mercantile is a retail shop, where you're going and taking items off of the shelf, so that's grocery stores, that's your boutiques, those are those types of things. In 2017, that was calculated to be 5,488 per thousand square feet of building area, that has increased to $12,786 per thousand square feet, for a total increase of $7,298 above the 2017 study. For factory, hazard, storage utilities, those are going to be your storage buildings, those are going to be any kind of industrial, you know, I know we have the industrial park that we're talking about out at the airport, those kind of things will fall under that category. Under 2017, it was $1,092 per thousand square feet, it is going to $2,432 for an increase of $1,340 per square foot. Office institutional, that's going to be your business offices, institutional is an assisted care, it is things of that nature, educational is going to be your K-12, it's going to be also, we have educational mixes in a lot of our churches where you have classrooms, when you have those expansions, it'll fall under that. That is under 2017, it was $2,145 per thousand square feet, that is going to $5,904 per thousand square feet, for a net increase of $3,759. The lodging, at the very bottom, lodging are one, that is going to be your hotels, that's going to be your transient-type residential uses. In 2017, it was $2,669, it will, per room, it's going to be going to $3,564 for a net increase of $895 over the 2017 study. Questions?
Basically, it's a 1% fee, but there's ceilings that lower, potentially lower.
Correct, and I'll tell you this, just based on, especially on the houses, 90% of the time, we hit the 1% cap before we hit this fee schedule number. Because if you look at it, basically, that 5830, that would mean you'd have to build a 500, you wouldn't, you would pay that fee up to a $538,000 house. You know, we have houses that are, you know, a lot of them are coming in at 400, 450, less than 538, they're paying a lesser fee because the 1% max is less than what the fee schedule dictates. The one thing that does do, and understand, too, impact fees on residential are not based on the cost of the structure, that does not determine the impact fee. What determines the impact fee is the impact and number of people in the structure, so it's actually keyed by bedrooms. How many bedrooms do you have in there? Because bedrooms equate to the number of people in the structure, they equate to vehicles on the road, increased need for fire, police, increased need for transportation, and things of that nature. So the residential are, like I said, it's not based, you can build a $10 million house with five bedrooms, they're going to pay the same as a $500,000 house with five bedrooms, because theoretically, you have the same number of people in it, you have same number of vehicles parking there, same number of cars on the road, so it's based on the number of bedrooms and actual occupants within the building.
You got a way to define what a bedroom is, otherwise you're going to have a $10 million house with three studies.
You know, it's funny you mention that, because we got a lot, we started getting a lot of plans, and it was for something else, but we started getting a lot of plans with offices, bonus rooms, this is a theater room, this is a study. Well, that falls back on our end to, is it a potential sleeping room? Because you have life safety requirements, you have to have smoke detectors, you've got to have egress windows, you've got to have these things in a potential sleeping room. So in our city code, we define a bedroom as a potential habitable room, it has to have a door and/or a closet or a bathroom. That is a bedroom based on our city code, because if it has a door, you're going to, and it really came up with these bonus rooms above the garages. I had one in a house I had one time, and I had 10 kids sleeping over in that room on a Saturday night one night, that needs a smoke detector, and that needs an egress window. So that's why we defined it. So that's how we would use our city code definition to determine the number of bedrooms. Everything is assumed, when you get into a demolition of a house, when someone buys a house and tears it down, that is counted as a default three-bedroom, two-bath house, that's the assumption. On the rebuild, if they come back with a five-bedroom house, they're going to pay a prorated 40%, because they're adding, you're going from three to five bedrooms, so that's a 40% increase, they're going to pay a prorated 40% impact fee based on what the calculation is.
Eric, we've been there.
We did go through.
Five over three is a 67% increase.
Okay, fair enough.
And you argue with me, but that's not right.
Oh, okay, fair enough. But, you know, that's why I rely on Tishler Bice to do my math, so, you know. But, yeah, so those are kind of the basis for it. The biggest thing I want to get out there is make sure everybody knows, we have charged this from, you know, the city has charged it from the time they were able to, we have done it throughout time. The bigger thing is, we can't do it outside the city limits, and that's where a lot of the confusion comes in, is, you know, people kind of, unless you see this map, and unless you know it, you don't know what's in, what's out. You know, the oddest corner that I can remember is at Twin Beach and Booth, where they built that Dollar General. Of those four corners, it was in the city, in the city, in the city, out, right there around that corner, and that's why the Dollar General could be built there, because at the time, it was unzoned county. There was no zoning restriction that said it couldn't be there. So anytime someone has questions, I always urge them, give me a call, I'll help you pinpoint what you're talking about, because it's confusing as to where it is and where it's not. You're commingled everywhere.
Bless you. All right, questions for Eric?
He did an excellent job of describing it, explaining it.
Well, thank you, thank you.
No, appreciate that very much.
Yes, sir.
Okay, we will go ahead and open the public hearing. If you would like to speak to this proposal, if you'll come forward to the podium, state your name and address for the record, you'll be given three minutes each. Okay, seeing no one for the public hearing, I will close the public hearing, and this will lay over until our next council meeting for final consideration. All right, that brings us to the last item on tonight's agenda, and that would be public participation. If you have anything else to bring forth before the council, if you'll come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, you'll be given three minutes.
Hi, my name is Dr. Mary Wells, and I live at 857 Seacliff Drive in Fairhope, and I am one of the owners of the 301 Fairhope Avenue building, which is the old hardware store. I'm coming to the city council tonight to ask for a letter of public support and help with the parking authority in solving our parking issue. We are hoping to develop this property into retail restaurant on the first floor and a small boutique hotel on the second and third floors. And we have had discussions with the city planning department, the mayor, all you members of the city council, we have attended the parking authority meeting and gone to the board of adjustments, and the city and the board of adjustments have recommended that we have one spot per hotel room. Of course, we are Zone B2, which means we're in the central business district, and there are no parking requirements based on that because of the downtown district. We explored many options, whether it be options in the city, and then also private parking options, and what we keep getting, coming back to us, is that the city's mantra is, what we do for one, we must do for all, okay? And what I'm coming to ask for is those same considerations that have been given to the recently approved hotel plans over where, kind of right across the street from here, and that hotel was last approved, was given credit for on-street parking, as well as an underutilized parking lot here at the Civic Center. And we've read through the staff reports to the board of adjustments, the recent parking study that was done on downtown, and the need to use the newly renovated parking garage, and we are asking that you support the credit for parking in the underutilized parking garage that is in our backyard, and as well as on-street parking, and then we would have in addition the six to seven parking spots that we could get on the backside of our property. So I'm coming to ask for help and resolution and some public support to get our parking issue solved.
Can I ask a question? Hunter, would you please answer this? Was the proposed hotel across the street given credits for underutilized parking here at the Civic Center?
That's incorrect. There is a provision within the zoning ordinance that allows credit for on-street parking, and some of the on-street parking on Oak, which in our study there was underutilized, there was a trade-off as well, because they did put loading zones and handicap, which is two to one parking space. is two-to-one parking space, on-site to not block the, the streets. So they had a drive-access aisle there. We did mention in the staff report, there, there's also Civic Center parking space in this area, but that was not utilized for the credits with the hotel. They still provided a one-to-one. Don't quote me on this number, I believe there had seven on-site and their loading zone, and maybe four. I can't remember that exact number, what was given credit for the parallel parking on Oak, that was on Oak. And the Civic Center was not giving credit. We can't lock that in, we don't know what's going to happen on this property.
But you, but you can give, you can give some credit for on-street parking.
You can. Within 300 feet, what we looked at, and we can show you the aerials, the occupant, we kind of called, look at it as an occupancy rating on those parking. Unfortunately, that corner doesn't have a surplus, in our opinion. There's a very high utilization rate, there's not too many on-street parking spaces on church. What we have is the angled parking on Fairhope Avenue. And those are utilized pretty heavily. So I think allowing credit for that, we typically look at what would be the impact on other businesses. So if, if 30 hotel guests are parking in those, it's going to affect the adjacent property businesses, is kind of what we looked at. Whereas Oak, at the time, we reviewed that project, they were severely underutilized, really the only parking there was one house, as well as the art center on occasion, but they weren't utilizing that on-street parking.
Thank you, Hunter. Counsel, I want to give you, yeah, I was going to give you, I was going to say I'm going to give you guys a chance to, to, to comment on this, because I, I want to make some comments on this.
That's a good ask. What's the difference between, I mean, on-street parking is public parking? Is that correct? Parking garage in certain spaces are public parking, is that correct?
There, in the regulations, it allows for on-street parking in the right-of-way, whereas at least one stance is the parking spaces within the parking deck are obligation for employees, except for the Hampton Inn, which the precedent there was, they had to build the parking deck and for one-to-one ratio for each hotel room. And then, I think there was an increase because there was an existing parking lot there prior, so that was a partnership between the parking authority and the Hampton Inn. They had to build it. Those are kind of earmarked in that study that was done when Hampton Inn was built, I think 2006. There's a, it's a whole parking study done by Walker Associates, I believe, Walker Collaborative, something along those lines. So right now, the, the city's ordinance is only allowing giving credit for those in the right-of-way.
Okay.
Within 300 feet.
Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, well, you know, this is something, parking is an issue. We're, I mean, this is not going to go away as far as parking in downtown, so we're going to have to put our smart caps on and, and kind of come together as a team and, and a community to figure this problem out. I don't think it's going to get resolved tonight, but it's great catalyst for conversation. You know, I don't know where we, where we are as far as the parking authority is concerned, what their attributes are to this situation, I haven't heard anything yet. But a couple of things, you know, you know, I think all of the businesses downtown are going to have to put some skin in the game, in my opinion, and to come into some type of cooperation or collaboration as far as what we're going to do going forward with parking. And some of the questions are, do we really want parking down there? Can it be, I mean, is parking, you know, you've got some cities that parking, you go to New Orleans, they're not worried about parking. You find your way, you know what I mean? And those are the questions that we're going to have to answer as we go forward. Another thing is, you know, I think there's opportunity for underground parking. I don't know if, if, if that was discussed, you know, but underground parking is an opportunity that's an, a notion besides on-street parking. I don't know if you guys thought about that, you know, and if y'all put that into your calculations as far as architectural design.
Well, it's just so cost prohibitive into the, trying to dig down, and then that also, we were told that that would count against one of the floors on height restrictions, even though that it's underground.
Right, yeah.
So then you have to look at the numbers to say, does that make sense to spend that much money to put parking? And then how would you turn around in there? Because it's not a very, I mean, we are on a corner, so we are landlocked, you know, with the streets.
Right, yeah. You know, there's other opportunities as far as shared parking, and I've, I've said this a thousand times, and I don't know what the legalities are, but the shared parking as far as our parking deck is concerned, you know, as far as people renting out space there and, and what that looks like, you know, I, you know, we, we've talked about all those different options. But, you know, I, I really believe there's something that, if, if it's not this case, then the next case, we, we're going to have to come up with a, a resolution and a solution for the parking situation, not just in your case, but period. You know, is that, is that, do we charge metered parking now? You know, to pay for future parking development? I mean, these are all questions that we're going to have to come to as a council, as a community, and there's no real easy answer, but I believe we can get it done.
I guess, I was just saying, I mean, y'all have a beautiful project. I mean, I've sat down with the development team and the architect, you've got a beautiful project, and the challenge with the parking, I think, for the rest of the council is just that we do know of other pending projects, I guess. I don't know what state they're in, but you've got to be able to somewhat be what you do for one, you have to do for all, maybe not exactly that, but you, you've got to know that what you do for one, you're going to be asked to do for the next couple, and, and we need to have a, a solution that can work kind of across the board, I guess.
All right. I had no idea you guys were coming tonight, but I'm going to lay some stuff out there. First, I don't think the challenge is all that difficult. I don't. I don't think the parking is all that difficult or a challenge. I think we have a prime property in Fairhope for which we're not getting any tax revenue right now, and I think we need to come up with a solution. And I know of some solutions that have been offered. There may be some reasons that, that they're not as favorable as I, I personally think they are. The one was, and I'm going to say it, over at the K-1 Center, we all sat up here, when they gave the plat for what was going to happen at the K-1 Center, there was one space there that was for parking, about 50, 55 spaces. These people have offered to design it and build it at no cost to the city. There is precedent for this. The Hampton Inn parking garage itself is a precedent. And nobody said that everybody else, you know, has to build a parking garage. They could say, well, what you did for one, you have to do for everyone, and use that as an argument, I feel, to say, then you need to work with us. And they may have a good argument for that. What's coming down the road, I can't help it. We only have a finite amount of land, so if somebody didn't come here with us, to us with that idea first, just like the Hampton Inn was the first hotel built in the center of town, nobody argued about it then. You know, as a city council, we are responsible for the real property in the city of Fairhope, and I take that very, very seriously. And I think, I don't think the parking authority should trump our authority on that. I think if we want to allow someone to enter into a public-private partnership to provide parking, we should do it. And just because there's not another space available doesn't mean the city of Fairhope has to go out, in my opinion, and purchase another piece of land so that we can make a deal with the next person that comes along. You know, just because we didn't live here 100 years ago and buy a piece of property downtown for a business doesn't mean that the city has to make some property available for us downtown. So another solution would be to possibly pay into a fund for a future parking debt to, to solve that. Because there are a, a lot of, in my opinion, underutilized parking spaces in our parking garage. It only fills up three or four days a year, or three or four times a year. Mardi Gras, Christmas, Light of the Trees, which by the way, it wasn't filled up at Light of the Trees because I parked on the second level, and I got there 15 minutes before we, before we lit the trees, or maybe, no, more than that, maybe an hour. The, let's see, I said Mardi Gras, Light of the Trees, Christmas Parade, Veterans Day, I don't think it, it fills up. So there's an argument to be had that they may be underutilized. So one day, people will figure it out and park there when it's necessary because they're parking on the streets in front of their own stores, or their customers are parking on the streets in front of their stores. But the other, I can make all sorts of arguments for why it makes sense to do what they had already offered. Another thing is that they did mention they're in B2. And if I put a restaurant in that location with no rooms and I have 150 people come to my restaurant, I don't have any requirement to park, to put any parking in at all. That just, it doesn't sit well with me. So I'm for coming up with a solution so that we can utilize that corner as a, a business to, to, to generate revenue for the city and enhance. Councilman Conyers said it was a beautiful design. I agree with you, I happen to agree with you. You know, it, it's too bad that, you know, all the bones of that building are falling apart, but it needs to be renovated and what they've envisioned, some people may like, some people may not like it. But I think that's what makes downtown Fairhope great is, there's all sorts of architecture in downtown Fairhope, all sorts of things. So I think it's just, you know, one more piece of the puzzle. But I've said a lot, I support you, I support you in your endeavor to find parking, I think that there are some simpler solutions, personally.
Well, that's why we're coming to you, because we are, we, we need a solution. Because we've owned this building now for, you know, over a year and a half, and we're paying on this note, and we need to move forward. And so that's why I'm here to really ask for guidance and help and let us come up with a solution so we can move forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
The fun concept of paying in to build a future parking garage makes, to me, makes the most sense if you're going to do something like that. Because doing with the, the temporary solution for the 50 parking spaces, long-term, that's not going to be probably sufficient, I wouldn't think.
Sorry. It's still the same. I'm one of Dr. Wells's partners, so.
Okay.
We just kind of had a plan, and after you spoke, I may not even need to speak, but I'm Dr. Dusty Smith, I'm partners with Dr. Wells, as well as the Prickets, and I live at 24161 Bayshore Drive. And so just to kind of reiterate, we talked about using the parking garage, and so I was tasked with looking at the study that was done earlier this year. And I really, based on that, that seems like a very logical answer to our parking requirements. From what I understand, that parking garage was reviewed 108 times over three months. They looked at both the parking usage for the hotel as well as parking usage for the public. And they looked at 11 o'clock, at 2 o'clock, at 4 o'clock, and 7 o'clock, Monday through Saturday. And at no time were there less than 60 parking places for the hotel or for the public that were available. I mean, that's 120 parking places that were never used. And like you said, there are certain times during the year, maybe three, that it is, but that is a lot of parking places, and fortunately, we are just right across the alleyway from that. I mean, it is an ideal situation that could benefit, benefit you guys, benefit us, and allow us to move forward with this project that I think is going to be incredible for Fairhope. Because what that building, I mean, it's been like this for as long as I can remember, and it's an eyesore, and it's embarrassing for the city, and, and we want to do something that is great. We live here, we raise our children here, we have businesses here, and, you know, we hope to continue to do that. And, and we're excited about doing this, but we're just at a standstill right now with no, you know, real answer to these requirements that have been placed upon us. So, so thank you guys for listening.
What are we talking about?
27.
I'm sorry?
27 for us. So 27, so there would, that would still leave about 90 a day available.
I do, I do, would argue a little bit that I think we need to increase capacity when we have the opportunities. That's, I'm kind of looking at future growth, because then if, if that, you know, I know there's capacity, there is no disputing that fact, but, you know, as we fill in, as we get more popular, we are going to need more, you know, more capacity. And I would just like to capitalize on the, the ability to generate capital for, for the future is what I'm saying, whether that be the fund, or whether that be a, a rent, or whether that be whatever that is. But I do believe there's a, I believe it's a fairly simple solution.
We agree.
Maybe that's just me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Tamela Prickett, and I live at 16321 Scenic Highway 98 in Fairhope. And again, this is about the hotel project. And I just wanted to make the point that has been made, but that in the CBD, specifically, parking is not required for a hotel. The reason why we are being told that we need to have the one, you know, space per room is because you can only build a hotel on appeal. So they're kind of going in through that door to require the parking. But I just wanted to note that there were a lot of other uses that we could do on this property that does not have that requirement, as you mentioned, Jack, earlier. Specifically, this specific site was previously approved for event space that could host over 400 people. And I know that there's an argument that event space is time-limited, but that doesn't take into account like the florists, the vendors, the, the planners, the, all these people that come in for hours and days that are going to also need parking. So basically, I, I think that this requirement is unintentionally creating us to be incentivized to look at things that would require even more parking, that then we wouldn't even have to provide parking. We could also do a WeWork-type space with office space.
How many of those could you get in there?
A lot.
100?
At least. A lot. And we're talking about a 27-room boutique-style hotel that's going to be operated and managed by citizens of Fairhope. We're not trying to build the Trump Tower. We just want to meet a need that we also think would be beneficial to the city with the lodging taxes. You know, there's all kinds of reasons why we think that the city needs a hotel, but for the use of it, but also just the lodging tax perspective. But anyway, we're here to ask you for some guidance, because we really don't know who can approve parking for us. Like, who, is it the parking authority? Is it the city council? We're, we haven't gotten great direction in that aspect. So we're asking for support of any credit we can get for parking on-street or in the parking garage, and also just help to tell us who can approve it. Thank you.
Thank you. Let me ask this question, just in, in response to that question, as far as who can give away spaces in the parking garage? I don't think it's us, because I don't think the city owns the parking garage. Who owns?
It's owned by the parking authority. Now, legally, the parking authority.
Yeah, so I mean, so, so to the answer to that question is, who can give you those spots in the parking garage?
Right.
It's not us, it's the parking authority.
Now, it, the, so the, the parking authority was founded by a city of Fairhope ordinance. I'm not recommending this happen, but the parking authority, you know, if that was dissolved and, and, and we gave, we vested the power for the parking, those properties that are zoned parking, we vested the council powers to the parking authority. Doesn't mean we can't take them back, and I don't think it prevents us from entering into other public-private partnerships that may include future areas in which parking is allowed. But the answer is, they do own the parking garage.
Right. And, so, yeah, that's why we're here to ask for support for some kind of agreement. I would encourage the council to look at the previous hotel that was approved. From what I recall, I did read it at the time very explicitly, that there was 14 rooms and they were given credit for seven spaces. I don't know where they were. I know they mentioned them being able to park here in the parking lot, maybe there were spaces also around the hotel, as we have spaces around our hotel. But, you know, we just want to be treated fairly.
Now, out of the 27 rooms, I believe you were going to be given some credits, you had some space, you were given no credits for any on-street parking?
Zero.
Is that right? And then there was no space to put a little parking in the, in the back?
We can put, we can put some parking in the back. It's limited, but we can put, I believe, four, three, three spaces.
So I'm just trying to fact-check you, I'm sorry. Hunter, is that true that there were, you don't, they were not given any credits for on-street parking?
So the only case we've had to review thus far is the board of adjustment case. There were three options given, it wasn't one fleshed out, there were kind of three half-solutions. The first plan we reviewed actually had The first plan we reviewed actually had parking, one space for every unit, hotel unit, at the staff level. I believe there were seven, unit seven parking spaces. I could have that.
Are you talking about our project?
Yes, that's correct.
No, we never had a seven hotel room project, but that's...
There were seven suites on the second and third floor, maybe eight. I won't argue.
That is incorrect.
Okay. I'm sorry, I'm mistaken. I'll go back and review those plans we have on, sitting on my desk and see who submitted those. We had a restaurant and a doctor's office on the ground floor. There was some parking in the back, I believe originally six, and then storage kind of, originally there was a garage-facing church street for loading that was going to take out two parking spaces, on-street parking spaces. So, no, we didn't encourage getting more of the limited church street parking. In revisions, that was switched to the back where the storage was, but that ate up some of the onsite parking. Really, the emphasis that we kind of saw was more the parking deck and looking at an off-site parking lot. And last we heard, there were still some conversations happening there, but we haven't heard anything in the four months that we tabled during the board of adjustment case.
The most recent board of adjustment meeting that we went to, we were given a packet from the city planning commission that said that there would be, and this was for the 27-room hotel, that there would be no credit for parking on the street. So, it was pretty black and white.
No argument.
Break off. My opinion.
We have the, I mean, we took drawn shots. We have those as well to see what those parking lots look like at 9:00 AM, 11:00 AM, and 2:00 PM on multiple days. And there wasn't a surplus of parking.
What about across the street here?
There was on that street. And, you know, we, that was, that's actually approved, the planning commission gives that one, not the board of adjustment. So, there's some, there's some procedural challenges here. The one, the authority that can give that is the planning commission to give on-street credit, and they may give that credit. We're not the ultimate authority. That's kind of part of the multiple solutions at board of adjustment. You know, we're just looking at the use there, not allowing planning commission to do that. And I think we've talked about some of those procedural. The onsite might, depending on what plan we ultimately saw, might require a rezoning of that property. That would ultimately have to come to planning commission and city council.
And every solution that we've tried to come up with, it seems like there's a roadblock. You know, we did, like we said, we went to the meeting with the parking authority and they basically said no because we, what we do for one, you know, that whole thing again. Then, you know, we asked for credit on the street. That was said no. We just don't know what else to do. We can't fit 27 parking spaces on a landlocked property. We can go and build an event space if that's what the city wants, but, and we don't have to have any parking. We're just, we're pleading with you to really look at as a whole and not as, you know, this is, you know, as this one thing.
So, there was a number of rooms that could fit, correct? And then the density was increased or where, what does that?
We have increased, but I don't believe it went from seven to, are you talking about for our project?
Yeah, what I'm asking is, was there a number that would have worked, but then as your density increased, you kind of fell out of that or spilled over out of that?
We can only fit about three to four spaces onsite, so a three to four-room hotel, I guess.
Yeah, I don't think though, I mean, even if there was a 15-room hotel, there's still an 11-space deficit, so.
Right.
Okay, so that was never a number.
So, basically, the hotel's not an option with, for us without a parking solution.
I don't think density of rooms triggered any of that. Am I correct on that? Hunter?
I want to go check the plan because I do recall a plan that had one 30 rooms onsite, but I'm not being misremembering that.
That was, yes.
And let me ask this question, just from, just from a precedence standpoint. I know we're talking about the hotel across the street that never happened. So, in hotels that did happen in the central business district, other than the Hampton Inn, are there any others that have come that have been negotiated or any deals made?
None that I'm aware of.
We've talked to some folks that have not submitted applications and they have been working diligently to fit their parking on their site. We haven't court deals. And really, the loading zone was also important there where there's no real loading zone proposed in this one, that getting that off. Y'all know, y'all know the problems we've been having on Section Street.
Sure.
And getting loading out of, the trucks out of Section Street, so.
And the solution with the Hampton Inn was obviously that Hampton Inn had to build a parking deck. And who, was it, was that, that was obviously before my time on city council. Who, was that a city and Hampton co-paid space or did Hampton pay entirely for that?
Hampton paid.
So, the Hampton Inn built the parking deck 100%?
100%.
Right.
And turned it over.
And then they did it.
And there is a, there's an agreement with that. That would also have to be vetted whether we, even if parking authority granted that, could they, under that agreement?
Right.
It goes back to...
Which we would love to go back to Jack's original idea of the K-1 center. We were just told it wasn't an option.
Yeah, I, I, when, when I met with you guys and you guys showed me that, my first response was, I never thought we had agreed to turn that space into a parking lot as a K-1 center. And then I, you know, I sent, came back and, and, you know, there was, I think, a preliminary drawing that might have been shown in here, but...
It was shown in here. We all agreed and we all said we liked it.
But until we form a master plan for what that property's going to look like, I don't think we should be giving any pieces of it away without a whole plan in place.
So, is what we're looking at basically, I mean, potentially, maybe we could be given some credit for on-street parking. You don't have the authority to give us parking in the parking garage, but you could possibly show support for the parking authority to work out a deal with us?
I would, I would say, you know, I think there's probably some solution that would be some mix between credit for on-street. Now, I think that's, Hunter, you correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that's the most subjective of what we're talking about here. But you're probably not going to get a lot of credit for on-street just based on the kind of how it sounds like that's calculated and also the scarcity of on-street parking. But, but it may be that you are, that you can have some of the spots in the parking garage, but I think that's going to be a cost, there's going to be a cost that has to be paid for that. Because again, if you're talking precedence and Hampton Inn had to build a parking garage to comply with the city's position, but yet then we're just going to give those spots to the next person in line. If I'm Hampton Inn, I'm curious about it.
We're more than willing, we've talked about this, I was not actually at the meeting, so I don't want to speak out of turn, but I believe that we had talked about that there could be a fee for the parking spaces.
Yeah, and I, and I don't know who, how that fee is determined and how that comes about.
We could come up with a fee. There's a formula to determine what the value of parking space is. And we could come up with that fee, it could be paid into a fund. The next developer that comes along wants to do something, can pay in that fund. And then we, then we go vertical right over there by Fairhope's Park with a parking garage or potentially on the west side of the K-1 property, you know, across the street, across Church.
I think that's the most realistic solution.
That's not a hard, that's not a hard, and because then you're more utilizing the existing parking garage, but you're still building capacity.
Yeah, but, but once again, we talked about this earlier about bringing all of the business owners together about these particular fees. And, and so, you know, it's going to fall down a line to where other business owners are going to have to pay into those fees as well. So, that's the, that's the, where you get into, you know, you speak for one, but you're not really, you have to see what the whole is, you know, as far as wanting to have those associated fees for some type of future development as far as parking is concerned.
But I'm going to go back to one other thing that we talked about in the public hearing, impact fees. What did Eric tell us on a residential unit, impact fees are based on?
Bedrooms.
Bedrooms.
Yeah.
So, you go downtown, you build an Airbnb with three bedrooms? What, do you have to provide one parking spot? You got three couples coming in, they're all taking a bedroom. You got three cars. You got a hotel room with one room, one car.
None of it makes sense, honestly. If you look at the code and the intended purpose...
You know, the Airbnbs are impacting the parking downtown maybe two or three times. And if they have it on two floors, it could be six times what hotel room impacts it.
And we believe we could fit, I believe, up to five condos. So, you're looking at a far less, you know, parking requirement on our part, but we want to do what we believe is the best use of the property, which is a hotel, a boutique-style, locally-owned and operated hotel.
Well, I don't know that we're going to solve it, but thank you for bringing that. And we're going to continue to ponder this. And I'm hesitant to assign a subcommittee to this, but we will work towards seeing if we can find a solution.
I appreciate it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you all.
I've done my own analysis on the parking and...
Can I get your name and address for the record?
I am Matt McKinney. My address is 18825 Scenic Highway 98, 36532. Thank you. And I would love for y'all to come with me at 12:45 in the afternoon and go to the Summit Parking Lot and the Summit Street. Countless parking places there. I've got photos of all this. I've spent a lot of time on this. Last Wednesday at 12:45, there were 24 spaces available on Church between Delamar and the Christian Science Church. 24 at 12:45. There were six available north of the art walk on Church. There were 10 going up Magnolia. There's nobody in the parking deck. I go by there all the time and take pictures. We're making much ado about nothing. And we've got, I've got clients here that are ready and willing to make a huge investment in Fairhope. Lodging tax, whatever. That is a dead corner. That is a atrocious building. It's dangerous, needs to be torn down. And this doing one for all, what's that statement? You don't have to do, look, capitalism is what it is. Real estate development has nothing to do with you do something for this guy, you got to do it for the next guy. It's whoever's standing there with a check.
Capitalism might not, but the legal community definitely does.
Yeah, I know, but successful real estate development is somebody that's got money in his pocket. I mean, that's ridiculous.
I have to disagree with that as far as doing, we, you know, you, I mean, you want to be as altruistic as you can, but you don't want to step on anybody else's toes just to give somebody else an opportunity. You want to give everybody the same opportunities.
Corey, I understand.
Yes, sir.
But the real estate business, the real estate development business, I mean, good gosh, I mean, we're a prepper of it, especially the beach. The first guy that shows up with the check is the guy that wins. We're standing here, ready to go. We've been working on this for a year and a half and we're nowhere. And we've, we've got a solid project. And we need some help. We've, we've also always had the, the idea that we would do valet parking. In other words, we'll take the car, we'll go parking. Yeah. Another very important point...
You're getting more time because you had council members.
Sorry, I'm running late too. I'm sorry. In fact, one of my buddies here in town says, look, you've got a hotel. Check-in is like 3:00 or 4:00 in the afternoon. Check-out is 11:00 in the morning. The only time there's any hustle and bustle in our parking situation here is like 11:00 to 2:30 because of lunch and that kind of thing. So, we've got a fixable deal here. And my clients are more than willing and ready to make something happen. I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McKinney.
Lou Seamer, 116 Eastern Circle, Fairhope. You've seen me before. My favorite subject is water. But it occurs to me this evening that with, with the parking situation, it's like deja vu all over again. There seems to be money for parks, recreation, and I don't disagree with Mr. Martin that it's nice to have a place to recreate, especially for the children and the next generation. Without a doubt, that's important. But money into the Golden Triangle and money into 114-acre park with the comment being made this evening that this is for 20, 30, 40 years ahead. We're at least 20, 30, or 40 months behind on water from my experience over the last two years. And I don't see as much money going into sewer and water as it's going into parks. The investment in the infrastructure...
Lot more going in. Lot more. Not to be disrespectful, but...
You might want to look one more time.
Lot more money going into, yeah, so. Yeah.
Well, that's another thing. I missed, I missed the first part of the meeting because I thought they started at 6:00. And you started, you started at 5:30 on it.
Well, well, so...
So, the question is, are we looking 20 or 30 or 40 years ahead in water?
Yes.
Yes, it's going to be very expensive.
Something that I preach all the time, you ask them.
Everybody's going to swear to that.
We're, we're, we're looking forward. We're not going to make the mistakes of previous times. We're looking forward.
Okay.
22 million.
Okay. My next and final question, I'll be well under three minutes. You're talking about...
You've got extra time.
A 16-inch, a 16-inch or a 24-inch pipe for water going this way and that way from Tower 2. I'd like to know where Tower 2 is, how many towers we have. I believe it's five or seven, Mayor? Five? And you're working on a couple more?
Weird about wells or water.
Well, does a, does a tower come with a well?
He's speaking of the water treatment plants.
Not all of them, no, sir.
So, anyway, I'd like to know where these towers are and whether, and whether they're serving the east, the west, the north, the south, or downtown. You're talking about more development downtown. I'm all for these people being able to develop their property, but that's going to require more water as well.
The 24 inches coming towards town, the 16 inches going away from town. Darryl, where is well treatment plant number two?
By Walmart.
Okay, got it.
Just slightly to the east of Walmart on the north side.
Yes.
Fairhope Avenue.
Right behind Aldi's, kind of.
That's correct.
Okay.
You got it.
And the tower that's here on Fairhope Boulevard, right past the... Number one and number two.
Yeah.
Okay, great. So, those are my questions, those are my concerns, deja vu all over again. Thank you for the investment, Mayor, and all your time and attention, as well as everybody in the council. But you can't keep up with growth without looking ahead and you might have been dealt a short stick in this administration. So, you were behind to begin with. So, hopefully more progress soon. Thank you, Mr. Burrell in council.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Okay. Anyone else?
So, in 18 years, I've never used my three minutes of public participation, but that all changes tonight. I didn't know that there was going to be such a, such a public participation tonight or I would have held off, but I'm going to say it anyway. I just want to reiterate what you said from my perspective. For the last two weeks, I've had the opportunity to pull the employee Christmas float for the sixth year and also be a part of the mayor's invite to turn the switch on for the lights. And people who show up for these events think that they just appear out of the ground, that you show up and there's this grand event and then it goes back in the ground and it comes back out of the ground at the next event. But from my perspective, that doesn't happen. From my perspective, there's a lot of people walking around with, with yellow, yellow safety vest on that work diligently to do their job every day. They do it safely. They, they don't do it for the gas superintendent to stand up here and... for the gas superintendent to stand up here and say that they're doing a good job, but they're doing a good job. And I would like to take my three minutes, or two minutes and seven seconds left, to say that, that from the, for the last two weeks, the Electric Department, Public Works, and Community Affairs have done an outstanding job to represent your city. And, and to see, there was a drone picture that I, that I got through email after the lighting of the trees, and it showed a sea of people in every direction. As far as you could see, when we were standing on that stage together, as far as you could see, there were people packed from building line to building line. And those people got to show up and see an event, and then go home. And the next day, there wasn't the remnants of Kevin eating Snickers on the sidewalk, because there was a guy with a backpack blower at 2:00 in the morning, blowing the sidewalks. So the next day, it looks like it never happened. Because it, those guys take pride in what they do, and I, I wanted to take my three minutes and just tell them, from my perspective, how much I appreciate what they do, whether it's blowing the sidewalk, sweeping the streets, putting the event on, turning the lights on. They all came on at the same time. Everybody clapped, and they went home. But that took a lot of work. It's millions of light bulbs. It's tens of thousands of strands of lights. And, and I just wanted to commend them, because I appreciate, and I got to see firsthand what quality work from quality people look like. That's it. Thanks.
Amen.
Don't forget who?
The police. Yes, look, look, I was pulling the, sorry, chief.
You can't win for losing.
Look, look, I, I was...
No matter what you do about it.
And, and the people that went to jail probably should have gone to jail, and, and, but, I, you know, I just wanted to, just, I got to see a lot of perspective from those two weeks. And, and I just felt compelled to tell you. Thank you.
It's magic.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Yes, magic.
Anyone else?
All right. I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. opposed, say nay.